So I'm calling the meeting to order at 5:32. And I'm gonna take roll call attendance. From Allford, Charlie Ketchin. I'm here. From Egremont, George McGurn.
Present.
Tom Burkle. Now, Donell Kelly.
She'll be joining as soon as she can.
Okay. Deb Phillips from Great Barrington.
Yes.
Great. Peter Taylor.
Yes.
Steve Bannon.
Yes.
From Monterey, John Silbert.
Yes.
Don Coburn. Laura Rodriguez.
Hello.
Hello. Numalbro, Jane Burke.
Yes.
Tara White.
Yes.
Susan Smith.
Yes.
Sheffield, Nadine is out. She had a death in her family and our thoughts are with her. Bonnie Silvers.
Yes, here.
Colin Smith. Stockbridge, Sean Stephen.
Yep.
Patrick Waite.
Yes.
Great. Who am I missing? Oh, Nick. Is Nick here?
On stage.
No. West Stockbridge, Marie Ryan.
Yes.
Molly Thomas. And Roger. Kevin. Okay.
And Lucy, Don Coburn did join like right after you called his name.
Oh, there he is. I see him. Okay, great. Hi, Don.
I have trouble signing. Sorry.
No problem. Anybody else in the attendee, Mary, that needs to be promoted?
Not at this time.
Okay, I did. I did invite all the union reps to this meeting and future meetings. I don't know if any of them are in the attendee.
Audrey is here today.
Okay, so Audrey's here. Great. Thank you for coming. Yeah, I don't see anyone else in attendee. Okay, and our two superintendents are here. Welcome. This must be a nice time for you, all the graduations and awards and things to celebrate. That's, that's great. Alright, so first thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes of May 9. I saw, before Roger finds it, I saw a typo on page four in the spelling of steer.
Yep. There was also a stipend on page two, the second paragraph, the word stipend.
Oh, yeah, I see it. Any other typos before I ask for motion to approve?
Page seven, under B, community forums, the one, two, three, fourth paragraph down. I'm, I'm not sure if I'm just reading it wrong or if it is wrong. Mr. Everwine stated, "They targeted late June intentionally to attempt to avoid the scheduling conflict of early June with graduation and school ending." He admits the timing is imperfect. Is, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. Then I have nothing else.
Okay. Alright, so were those typos corrected? I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Start with Egremont this time. George McGurn.
Yes.
Donell, has she joined? No. Tom Burkle. Deb Phillips.
Yes.
Peter Taylor.
Yes.
Steve Bannon.
Yes.
John Silbert.
Yeah.
Don Coburn.
Yes.
Laura Rodriguez.
Yes.
Jane Burke.
Yes.
Tara White.
Yes.
Susan Smith.
Yes.
Bonnie Silvers.
Yes.
Sean Stephen.
Yes.
Patrick Waite.
Yes.
Marie Ryan. Thank you. Marie Ryan.
Yes.
And Roger.
I am staying. Not present.
Okay, Charlie.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Did I miss anyone? Okay. Minutes are approved. Alright, so next thing on the agenda is an agenda item that a couple people asked me to include on this meeting's agenda, and I'm happy to do that. The, the, there were some folks who didn't have a chance to speak before we took the vote on April 26th, and I want to make sure that everyone who wants to speak on the reasons for their vote, either in favor or against the selection of the preferred option, has an opportunity to do so. And I think it might make sense to, you know, see what hands are up and then, you know, start with number one, with either someone speaking in favor or against, so then flip to someone who voted the other way and back and forth until we've heard from everyone who would like to speak. And I really do encourage those, especially those who didn't speak up on April 26th about the reasons for their vote to do so now. I think it would be really helpful to understand that because for a lot of reasons, but one of which is that to the extent there was information missing that folks thought they needed to have before voting in favor. If we can work to get that information, get those questions answered, we should, we should do that. So with that, I'm gonna turn the floor over to those who would like to speak to their reasons for and against the preferred option, the option that was recommended by our research team A2.
Lucy, I have something new to say, so it's not repetitive.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Jane.
Good.
I, I wanted to bring to the attention of the full board something that I noticed when I went on to look at our April 26th meeting because I think I expressed concern that I might have misunderstood what our charge was. And I want to bring it to your attention that at the hour and 25 minute mark, Don Coburn made the following motion. "I move, we accept the recommendation of Jake and approve Model 2 for further research." That was the motion. We then had 20 minutes of discussion and we came back when it was time for the final vote and Laura Rodriguez requested that Lucy restate the motion. This is what Lucy said. "The board selected as the preferred model A2, a single K-12 district with a merged high school to be built on the Monument Mountain High School site." That is not the motion that Don made. It does not include for further research, and in my opinion, because according to Robert's rules, which I'm not sure we did adopt, if there's going to be a change in the motion, the person who wants to make the change asks to make the amendment. I want to add here, this is one of my concerns about our whole process because in the discussion, people like Colin Smith and myself and also our facilitator said that picking a model was a way to get us into further depth to look and see what changes we wanted to make. And we risked the public getting the wrong impression. And if I read a draft of the press release that was put out after that meeting, it states that we approve the research team's recommendation that the two districts merged, et cetera, et cetera. But it doesn't mention, "We approve this for further research," which I think a lot of us had a feeling that we needed to know more before our full approval was going to happen. So this is my concern about our whole process. We don't listen to each other as closely as we should. The, the Zoom situation really takes away from our concentration. None of us spoke up and said, "That's not what Don said." And we tend to go along with the chair and we are talked to as if we should because she later said, "I have confidence," and she referred to me as holding my questions back. So that makes it difficult, but I think it's really clear that I have not held my questions back. So I, I would call upon the committee to the board to re-vote this in the way that they would like it to be voted so that we can be clear on our lower my hand at this point.
Okay, thanks, Jane. I've got the minutes in front of me and I'm gonna read from them. On page 12, I was asked to restate the motion on the table, which has been seconded, and I restated it as follows. "A motion for the board to select as the preferred model A2, which is a single K through 12 district of the eight towns with a merged nine through 12 high school to be built on the campus of the current Monument Mountain High School." I then asked both Don Coburn and Steve Bannon to confirm this was a correct statement of the motion. This is in the minutes as seconded, and both confirmed that it was. So both the movement of the motion and the person who seconded the motion confirmed that I had restated the motion properly. So I don't, I don't think your criticism is fair, Jane. I attempted as best as I could to restate the motion in a clear way and then confirmed with both the person who made the motion and the person who seconded that I had captured correctly what was intended. Well, wait, wait, wait. Let me finish, Jane. Let me finish. In terms of the main point, the substantive point of whether there's going to be further work, design and development work of the preferred model, no argument there. We, I said during that meeting and in prior meetings that by selecting the model that was recommended by our research team, the next steps would be building out the prototype, which would include testing the assumptions that are embedded in the model that was recommended. So I don't disagree that there is further work to be done, and I don't think anyone on this board is going to disagree with that. But I do believe that I correctly restated the motion and I got confirmation from both Don and Steve that I had captured it correctly.
Well, in my, in my hearing of it, that I did not hear that, I think it would have been fair for you to say for further research for the sake of those of us who were led to believe that we were not picking a model that, that you would then advertise as the model that we've chosen because you closed the door in a way to further discussion, and other people want to talk, but I'm, 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 I'm finished right now.
Okay. I didn't close the door to further discussion. We're having further discussion now. Peter Taylor.
I'll defer to others. Some hands popped up as a result of this exchange and, and I, perhaps there's others that have more timely comments to follow the last exchange.
Okay. Steve Bannon, your hand is up?
Yeah, I, I think this board has to make a decision. Are we going to move forward? Are we going to discuss semantics? Because I don't know who didn't understand the motion, but I thought it was very clear. And I'm getting concerned that as we move into summertime, that many of us have had a lot of, of this board and would like to move on or move out because quite honestly, I don't want to spend my summer talking about semantics when we can do really good work. And I'd like to be with my family if we're going to sit here and quabble over something that, quibble over something that we've already discussed. We're already passed. And just if we want to take another vote, let's take another vote and move on. But it's getting very frustrating at this point.
Laura.
Hi. I was going to just speak to my vote. Should I hold off on that for now?
No, I think we can move forward with that. Unless Don, you want to speak to this particular issue? Okay, why don't we skip to Don and come back to you, Laura, since he made a motion?
I, I'd be very interested to hear what Don has to say about this.
Okay.
My motion was perfectly clear that I was moving to accept Jake's recommendation. And that's precisely how it was restated. The concern expressed a few minutes ago seems to be, seems to suggest that we had decided that this was going to be the plan no matter what, and we all know that's not true. We all know that, as Jake said, there's going to be a lot of further study. And for example, suppose the actual transportation study comes out and we find that this isn't unfeasible, what we've done. That's one of the possibilities. So to suggest a concern over words that somehow that means we're not going to be actually fully reviewing this plan and deciding for sure whether we want is just not so. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Patrick? You're muted.
Just gonna say I would be happy to make a motion that repeats exactly the motion in the minutes and let everyone vote on it so you don't have to spend any more time on this.
I, I don't think it's necessary unless there is, you know, unless a majority feel, I mean, you can make the motion, Patrick, if you'd like to, but I don't think it's necessary. Susan?
I, I don't want to take much time up on this either, but I truly thought the vote was to research the possibilities of if this is going to be feasible or not. I thought it was abundantly clear and I, I am just kind of staggered that we're having this conversation.
John Silbert.
Yeah, I agree with Steve Bannon. And I'm very concerned that we've lost respect for the process here. It's great to discuss things. We should discuss them as thoroughly as possible. People should state their positions and their concerns, but they should not repeat them endlessly, and I really think that we have a problem here. If we cannot, if, if, if someone who voted and lost honestly cannot accept the vote, we, we really have a problem. It becomes obstructionist. And I'm, I'm also getting very concerned about it. I love to hear from everybody. I love to hear from everybody when they have something new to say. Everybody should contribute. This is why we're all doing this together. But we all know at the end of the day that we have to vote on things and we have to move forward. And at the end, of the end of the day, when we make our recommendation to the eight towns, they will be voting. And I hope that we offer them the same respect for their votes that we would offer to each other. So I'd really like to move on. I'm a little surprised that this is even on the agenda.
Okay, Bonnie.
Thank you. My only comment is that we, what we have to be careful about is how it gets communicated out. And I said this during our communications outreach meeting. Is Lucy, what you stated appeared in an article all the way down. And the top part of the article spoke about how we are clearly moving ahead advocating for the model. You made it very clear in the statement that they quoted you on that this was a decision leading to further research and discussion. So maybe it's incumbent upon us. I think the clarity comes with being sure how we communicate. Many people that I have spoken with recently, my favorite term, think fait accompli, that the board voted to make this decision. They ignore the fact of it was for further research and discussion. That's, you know, that's, we are not, and they're thinking that everything we're doing is just to advocate to make this win in an election. They don't understand that the meeting's on the 28th and the 30th. That's part of the process of getting other information and greater clarity. And I, I think that one of the things we have to be cognizant of as we go ahead is we cover what was the second part of the motion. Ensuring to the communities that what is going on is the approval for further research and discussion. And as Don pointed out, we could wind up with further research and discussion and wind up finding out it's going to cost us $12 million to transport kids. Obviously exaggerating, but that's, that's my position in terms of just being careful of our clarity.
I just want to point out that the press release, which was approved unanimously by the Community Outreach Subcommittee states, "While the RSDBP's April vote signals its interest in pursuing the recommended model, much work and community outreach lies ahead." This is in our press release. "The board agreed to dig into further details regarding transportation, special education, facilities and food service. It will begin work on drafting a new regional school district agreement with legal and other expert support. The board plans to make expanded community outreach a priority, and the board will begin the work of bringing together educational leaders and other district stakeholders in the framing of an educational vision for a merged district." So it's in the, it's in the, it's in the, okay.
I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, I just want to make sure the board is aware that our press release very clearly signaled that there was a lot of work ahead. It wasn't just my commentary. It was in the press release that the board issued. So let's go to Peter Taylor.
Yeah, I'll go. I just want to.
And Roger.
Thank you, Lucy. You know, I, I had some other comments based on the wording and the agenda, but I, I do think that I'll use my time differently. You know, I, I know that this conversation has some energy around it and there's, there's different points of view, but I think at the end of the day, it's just affirming the direction that we're on and that we're intending to go on, which is indeed to research, you know, the model that was recommended and we adopted for further study. That study, of course, is going to lead us to a set of findings that will allow us then to evaluate if that indeed would be a recommendation that would go to all eight towns. As we've acknowledged throughout this whole process, we do not hold the responsibility nor the authority to make a decision here. Our, our role is to do exactly what we have been in the midst of and that we need to continue to do with all diligence. And that is to investigate what will serve the best interests of the eight towns in terms of being able to maintain and enhance educational quality for the kids that are in our communities. And that's been the driver from day one is how do we do that in a way when we have declining enrollments and rising costs? And it'll be a choice ultimately for the eight towns to make, but it's our responsibility as charged to investigate what is the best path to recommend to the eight towns. And so I think this conversation has given us clarity that indeed we are on a path that's aligned with our charge and that is indeed to do more due diligence. And that includes the community outreach, which we have also held up as an important value and part of our process, which is coming up later this month. So thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Laura.
Hi. I really just want to talk a little bit about my vote and just say that I'm comfortable with the path that we now are on with a well-researched look at this particular model and my no vote really reflects, and I'm, and I'm totally aware that I am somebody who's eight months into this process and not two years and maybe has a little more capacity for time on this. But my no vote really reflects the necessary comfort that all of us need to come to this next part of the process with. Because yes, ultimately, we have to set something up that, you know, is, is brought to a vote in the towns, but I think if we ignore the step of having like a real buy-in from everybody that is authentic and everybody feels hurt, if we just somehow skip that step of really having some common ground to work from, then this is all going to be for naught. We're going to be in eight months and two years and three years of meetings for nothing. So that's my concern.
Thanks, Laura. Patrick?
Yeah, we just spent 10 minutes talking about how some reporter wrote an article that we have no control over. Can we move on to the agenda? I'm sitting here at Chesterwood, missing an event because we're having a conversation that frankly, to me, seems not really relevant to what we all came together to talk about.
Thank you.
Okay, Roger.
I was going to attempt to make a process recommendation. It strikes me that this entire conversation has to do with what Jane considers to be a missing element in the original motion. So is it possible that we make the, that issue go away by entertaining an amendment to that emotion, which maybe Jane could provide for us so that it satisfies her need to fill that information gap? And just vote on an amendment? And because everything else we're saying, you know, we're singing to the choir here. We're all for going forward, but we're, you know, Jane has a point. And, and she wants it to be, you know, and I'm thinking, and I'm only thinking about what Jane said and how we satisfied Jane's need and how we then move on. So that's, that's my recommendation. Thank you.
John Silver.
I believe that Lucy just explained that Jane's concerns are in fact written into the motion. And furthermore, I really, I really don't think we should spend all of this time dealing with a complaint of a, of a single or even a few board members or even a minority of board members after a vote has been taken in, in good faith by everybody here. So I do not recommend that we re-vote, and I agree with Patrick. We, we need to move forward. We have a lot of work to do here.
Okay, I don't see any more hands up, so I'm going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Sean, is your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, this is just ridiculous. We just wasted a half an hour on absolute nonsense. And as Steve said, if this is going to keep on going on, you know, it's just ridiculous. This was a vote that everybody took, that everybody knew what they're voting on. And you can't come back, you know, a month later and say, "Oh, I didn't know what I was voting on." This is nonsense. Can we just move on to the agenda and get this over with?
Okay, seeing no new hands up unless your hand does up, Patrick. I'm going to move on to item four, which is frequently asked questions, board member questions, and the research team responses.
You ready, Lucy?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to jump in. Can y'all see my screen? Yeah?
Yep.
Okay. I just, you all know, I fold my slides in just to keep me on task. And so I'll run through my section of the agenda, which is the frequently asked questions and a few other things that are relevant to the update on where we are in the work plan. I just skipped to the first couple of slides, really just to keep me moving along. You all know that there are frequently asked questions have been posted on the website. There are nine categories, we drop down menus. There are 47 answered questions populated on the website currently. Since we have populated the website with frequently asked questions, we've also received question sets from a couple of members and some individual questions from, from folks that we've been compiling. And we're just about done with most of those. I'm ready to publish those, but I just wanted to walk through some of the questions that have been asked. I do thank folks, including Jane and Tom, board members who provided question sets and memos to me and then individual questions that came my way. This is one particular question set. I believe this was from Jane Burke. And I'm only providing the questions on the slide. And there's a lot of text here. But I have all the responses to the questions ready to go. I have sent those back to Jane. I apologize, Jane, for the amount of time it took me to get those to you. But we wanted to make sure we answered the questions as accurately as we could. And I wanted to make sure that my responses were reviewed by the team, which they were. So these are the questions. I don't know, Lucy, if you want to pause on these slides. If there's any questions that people want to focus on. Otherwise, what I will be doing is creating under each of the dropdowns, sort of a timestamp that says, you know, these questions were submitted and populated as of, you know, June 9th. So that folks know where the old questions are, where the new questions are, and we can differentiate those. And then the other thing is, and this is a suggestion that I heard was if we could number the questions online, that might make it easy if people have a particular question. I'm always really careful about how I respond to people because I want to be as user friendly and as customer friendly as I can to people from the public who reach out and not just say, go to the website. So I usually do try to take the time to write people back, but there may be some efficiency in saying to people, you know, on the website, if you go to this address and look at question, you know, A3, you'll find the answer you're looking for, or I can cite it. So this is one set. Any questions or comments, Lucy? If you want me to just pause?
Well, I think we should ask Jane whether there are any of these questions that she would like the answers discussed at this board meeting. She, she had asked that her questions be shared with the full board. Here they are. And you've responded to her. You're going to be posting the answers on the FAQ portion of the website. But Jane, are there questions identified here that you would like to discuss with the full board?
Not particularly. I think what I have been concerned about is we have a research team that's given us answers and Jake's responses were similar to what I had already read. My feeling is that many of these questions need another set of eyes for a second opinion. So I don't think that we need to, maybe in the, in the task forces that we have, some of these things will come up. But for instance, the location of the high school of somewhere south of Great Barrington so that the two, the Mount Everett kids will not feel like they've been folded into the location that's comfortable for Great Barrington. And that seemed to be an obstacle for the research team. I'm just interested to see if somebody else has a creative way of making that, reconsidering that. So I, I don't want to take time up on these. And people can read what, what the research team said. And I, I'm still left somewhat unsatisfied by, by some of the answers that I got. And I'm hoping we'll look at it with new eyes as we go further.
Do you have follow-up questions for Jake that you want to post?
I don't think so. I think I've made myself pretty clear about the things that I, I feel need further input. And I think if you ask the same person the same question, you get the same answer. So I'm hoping that the new people who come in are going to cast some new light on some of these things. Not to cast aspersions on, on Jake's work, but as a scientist, when you do research, you usually submit it to review by others, experts in the field.
Jake, would you like to respond to any of that?
No, fine.
Okay.
I can move on to the second set.
Fine.
Second set was submitted by Tom Burkle. Again, this is probably, this is what not to do on a slideshow one-on-one is put a lot of words on a slide. But I wanted you to have, you all get the slideshow and you'll have these questions. But these questions will also be populated on the website. Tom and I have had some electronic back and forth over the last six weeks and we clarified.
Obviously.
Yeah, but we clarified a few questions and he did receive a response from me last week and thanked me for that. And so I don't think he's here to comment about any particular questions, but.
He is not available at the moment. He's dealing with the US Open on the other side of the Commonwealth.
Okay.
So.
Go ahead, Jake.
Yep, so again, the questions, I'll make sure they get put into the frequently asked question sections under the appropriate headers. And we'll go from there. Again, I can pause for a second if people, if there's a particular question that piques your interest, that you want me to respond to. And I know there's a lot of text here, but.
So am I correct, Jake, that there are now no unanswered questions that have been posed to you?
I got one more slide.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So there are additional questions, three, and I'm saying these are the in-progress questions. And I think actually there were the first couple of questions I've answered. But there are some things that the research team, you know, this is kind of the work when we're nuancing some of the, some of the particulars of regulations and understanding finances and things of that sort. At where we were asked some questions about possible governance models. And so obviously that'll be an ongoing air research that'll occur in the Regional Agreement Advisory Group. And so some of the early exchanges on that are helpful, the talk with people about, you know, research and things like that. So yeah, so these are some of the things that will be ongoing that the team's working on. We'll be discussing a few of these things next week in the Finance Subcommittee in terms of where are there additional assessments, methodologies, or assumptions that the board or finance members would like our team to run? You all know that we ran a set of assumptions and those certainly can be challenged or they can be manipulated. And so we're looking forward to hearing from the committee next week on that. So I can move along, Lucy, if that, unless people want to pause for a second.
Yeah. Patrick, your hand is still up. Is that an artifact or do you have a new question?
I just had a comment, you know, as I pointed out before, my house is about nine miles from Monument along the bus route I took 40 years ago. And, you know, the Center Sheffield to Monument is about 11 miles. It was located there because of the central. It is not located there to give Great Barrington some, you know, kind of huge benefit. I would prefer be part of the Tanglewood campus because then, you know, any, my neighborhood kids could put it there. I just, I just feel like, you know, that some of these like statements frankly need to be challenged a little bit because it's unfair to the group.
Thanks, Patrick.
All right, I'll keep moving along then, if that's okay. I think the next agenda item was an update on the project plan, Lucy.
Yes.
So at the last meeting, May 9th, you all approved sort of task areas that we're going to be working within. There are five, Community Outreach Engagement, Ed Visioning, Review Agreement, Additional Analysis, and Advocacy. You'll see that those are also going to fall and be connected to the subcommittees. Just real quickly, this was the slide that was shared the last meeting. Just wanted you to see it. And there's a little bit more description of what's happening within each of these task areas. And then I'm going to, on the next slide, just talk a little bit more about kind of update folks on what we've been up to. But within the task areas, the idea would be we would really set some regular meeting structures, have retreat or sort of, you know, partial day formats. Ultimately bring findings back through subcommittees into the full board. This is, you know, to the earlier conversation about the deep dive in the research into the A2 model. Bring more stakeholder voices to the table. Bring in additional consultants and viewpoints and expertise as needed. And then ultimately, you know, bring a final agreement and ed plan to the board for review and approval. So the areas, real quickly, this will just reveal itself, the slide in five segments. And you'll see that there's the task area, the actions. We are talking about undertaking and then where we are in terms of updates. So I did this single slide just to very briefly give the board an overview of what we're up to on the five areas. So Committee Outreach and Engagement is primarily focused right now and preparing for the 28th and 30th, which will be the virtual convenings. And additionally, into that, we obviously worked on the, on the press release and that's been circulated widely. And we continue to, you know, keep the website up to speed. It's, I get a lot of compliments on the website. And so I'm hoping people are using that. So in addition to that, we have the project management team approved additional contracts for a facilitator for the convening and, and then support from Mary Nash, who's helping to do some of the backbone work and the analysis of convenings, which would be we're collecting information from people during the convening, in addition to sharing with them what we've been up to and what we, where we are in the process. But we're hoping to curate all that information we get from folks and then use that as a mechanism to bring back to the board and inform the board on what we heard. In addition to that, we are, Lucy has sent letters out to the towns. I don't, I don't want to steal or thunder Lucy. So if you want to explain this, but we're beginning to schedule meetings with the town boards. And I think in most cases, we're going to attempt to do that as a team. And I think the first one actually is this week. Is that correct, Lucy? That's.
Yeah, it's tomorrow in Stockbridge. Yep.
So, so that's ongoing. And then we have talked to community engagement about additional outreach to groups. I did a short presentation to the Great Barrington Rotary, which I thought was, was great to be in person with some people, ask, share information, answer questions. So, and the last thing I did want to mention is we did activate our social media contract. We had three months contracted, we'd used two months. We suspended the social media to sort of push it forward. But now we're on a 30-day schedule to really try to promote the community convening as we head into the 28th and 30th. We had visioning work. We have received a draft of the Hanover Report. We've asked them to go back and make some revisions to the report. I've received information that actually the last couple of days that we should get that report by the last week of June. And then Deb and I are working to schedule an Ed Educational Quality Subcommittee. And that will be really to focus on really digging into these sort of three areas of Ed Visioning, which we discussed, grade nine programming, career vocational technical ed, and then K8. So we've still got some structural work to do to get ready to get those three working advisory events coordinated. And I will say that we are having conversations with potential vendors and facilitators, including the Bar Foundation, who maybe will provide support for some of this work. The only contract related to that is, it's not really, I guess it is Ed Vision because Ken Rock, who's on the call, will be working on the vocational education element with obviously the group. I don't know if there's hands up, if you want to stop. I can just keep rolling through and then we can answer at the end. The Regional Agreement Group obviously is going to be focused on putting together a draft regional agreement that has all the elements of, of what is expected to be in a regional agreement. Both districts currently have one. Things like budget assessments, governance, transportation, buildings. We have contracted with the approval of the Project Management Subcommittee to work with the Mass Association of Regional Schools. And I'll share that proposal with you in just a minute for the month of June to help us get up to speed on the regional agreement process. And then we'll be working on forming an advisory group, I think, as part of the outreach to the towns. Lucy, we're talking about that as an element in working on, you know, recruiting members to serve on that advisory group. And then in addition to that, we're obviously going to be relying heavily on Finance Subcommittee to develop a subset of assessment methodologies because ultimately the assessment methodology has got to be built into the regional agreement. And so we will be contracting with MARS. We've extended Abraham. We have to do again a bit more hours with Abraham. But, but we're, that's where we are with the regional agreement at the moment. The additional analysis, there are a bunch of functional areas which we talked about possibly leaning into the Operation Subcommittee met. And we have, a decision was made to move forward with transportation. And I'll be talking about the RFQ that was released. And we have one applicant that will be hopefully acting on tonight. And then we obviously discussed specialized and other operational areas. So a contract that will be before the board tonight will be for Transportation Deeper Dive. So that's where we are in the additional analysis. And then lastly, advocacy is just really ongoing. A lot of work, which again, I'll be touching upon in the funding with the delegation, with the Department of Education, with other regions, support agencies like Mass Association of Regional Schools, Mass Association of School Committees to support and understand and borrow expertise as we move forward. So those are, those are really quick updates on the task plan that you all approved at the last meeting and sort of where we are with each of those. I'll hit some highlights. This is the brochure for the Community Talks on the 20th and 30th. We've circulated that to you all. It's on the website. We're using social media, Facebook, Instagram to push it out. We currently have, and the districts, obviously both Beth and Peter have been very supportive and obviously circulating this. We have 43 registered, which is pretty good. I suspect we'll, we may end up with between 80 and 100 between the two sessions, which would be great. So continue to talk this up and encourage folks to, you know, register for these, these events. We'll be, again, we have a Community Engagement Subcommittee on Friday. So there'll be more detail on Friday if folks are willing to, interested in tuning in there.
Can I just ask a quick, quick, quick?
Sure.
On the Community Outreach, would, can you circulate the dates that you're meeting with select boards like you did the first time around? So that if any of us want to attend to listen in, we can? That's all.
Yeah, absolutely. So Stockbridge is tomorrow.
I think you already have posted it, actually.
We have Sheffield on July 5th and we have Egremont. July fifth and we have Egremont. Help me, George. Is it June twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth, yes.
Yeah, June twenty eighth at ten AM. Those are the only times we've got confirmed so far.
Yeah, if you can just send, you know, email them as you get them as opposed to having to keep going back to the website. I know it's me being lazy, but I'd appreciate it.
Okay, I'll do a, I'll do a running list and every time I have a new one, I'll send it out.
Thank you.
Okay.
We look forward to seeing you.
Thank you, George.
You have a hand up, Lucy.
Jane.
All right. I was wondering what the progress is on forming the task force groups, if any?
I guess I need you to maybe explain what you mean by the task force.
Well, I thought that maybe I'm missing understanding, but for each of these areas that you're exploring,
Right.
there, there was, I believe, a description of recruiting community members and people into working with us on these things, or did I misunderstand that?
No, no, I think when we have the educational subcommittee meeting, a big part of bringing folks from the community into the conversation around the ed visioning, which is on the screen right now, will be organizing into those three working groups. And so we'll have to make some decision about how we're going to be structuring those processes. So, you know, I think what I had mentioned at the last meeting was it could be that the nine through twelve visioning work is an, is an open community meeting where we're bringing folks into obviously targeting and inviting people, but also allowing folks to participate in some sort of, you know, extended day experience where we're working through, you know, getting feedback on the kinds of things that are possible in the new high school and the nine through twelve program. So I guess my answer to your question is I would expect that that would be additionally discussed at the next subcommittee meeting on education.
So in short, the other areas of exploration won't have working groups attached to them?
Well, there will be one also for the regional agreement.
Okay.
And so the regional agreement, I just mentioned that Lucy will be talking with the towns about having representatives to that group.
Okay.
Yep. The community outreach and engagement group has a very, I mean, I think the subcommittee has been managing that work pretty actively. So I think the plan at this point is to continue with the subcommittee as the guiding hand behind that.
Yep.
And then operations will be tackling the, the additional functional areas as we have interest and funds to do that work. And then I guess the last group is really the advocacy group, which I, I think I'd mentioned really, I guess falls on the shoulders of your, the leadership of this board, which is Lucy and Peter. And then when directed, me or other individuals from the, from the board. Does that help? Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
So I, I put the slide up again, just to remind people about these converging processes around Mass School Building Authority and regionalization and ed visioning. Just to, just remind folks, I often get asked, you know, how does the building project work with the regionalization process? And they really are typically processes that run along a particular pathway and the idea is how do we get those pathways to overlap with each other? And so I really think the ed visioning work will, will, will be structured to hopefully accomplish that. So the Mass Association of Regional Schools, again, with the endorsement of the project management team, has been contracted to work for the month of June and they in effect are going to be providing technical assistance to help us to stage for and prepare for, understand regulations related to organize a timeline and ultimately frame a draft regional agreement with some options. Clearly they have a massive amount of, of experience in writing regional agreements. And so to borrow their expertise for the next month and helping us to get ready, helping the regional agreement advisory group to get ready is going to be very important. So their deliverables are listed here. They're going to be reviewing the, the two agreements, looking at, you know, various other agreements that exist across the state. Some of the more contemporary ones identify issues. Look at options within some of the key areas, you know, things like how do you do governance? Where, what are different ways you might want to consider structuring your government, governance system? How, what are different ways to think about assessments, both on the operational capital side? So these are all things that they're going to help us to put some structure to so that when we hit the ground running with the advisory, we have a good framework from which we can, we, which we can work.
Jake, I think we took that word facilitator out of their proposal.
Sorry.
Yeah, that doesn't belong in there. I think it, it read meet with chair, vice chair, project manager, something like that.
I think you've asked me to fix that twice already, so.
That's okay. You're not out until the third strike.
Thank goodness for that. All right. And then the advocacy side, you know, we continue to work with the delegation. I will be, I guess I can just tell you now that the regionalization funds, as the project management team knows, did not make it through the Senate process. The regionalization funds, funds are not going to be, it appears in the FY twenty three budget. So the only thing I will say is that there is additional money that has been been put into the rural aid bucket of money. And what Senator Hines has alluded to me is that there may be some, some structured funds that will be set aside to support collaborative and regionalization efforts. So I, I guess in effect, it would be replacing the regionalization funds. I don't have anything more really today to give you in terms of detail other than that. So I am holding out a little hope that there might be some, some of that rural money might be set aside for the purposes of supporting work like, like this board is doing. And the, and there are other groups across the state who are doing this work too. We did find out, I thought that our, our Burke twelve, there is a relationship between this group and Burke twelve, obviously because Burke twelve is funding, you know, a, a, a chunk of, of, of our work and our, our, our research team. So
it, excuse me.
Funded then, yes, sorry.
I'm not sure everybody understands Burke twelve and
Oh, sure.
how we've always had this relationship, which is true. And this is a kind of rebranding of our partner.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. So it's, I appreciate you saying that. I'm, I'm not even sure if I've shared this with the board yet. So my apologies if I haven't, but the Berkshire County Education Task Force, B C E T F, which is really where you all started this year, a partnership with them, has gone through a really a, a, a more than almost two-year process of really thinking about its mission and where it's headed. And it was originally organized as a research and modeling in policy group. But over the last year and a half, they've been getting, they, we've gotten more into doing things, things like the Portrait of a Graduate initiative, the Berkshire Remote Learning Initiative, professional development across the county. So the task force took a vote in December to change their name to Burke twelve. Burke stands for Berkshire Educational Resources, K twelve. And the idea is that in addition to the ongoing platform of supporting research and modeling, that we will continue to do work that helps districts to work together and across district lines. So to really, in some ways, we're filling in the role of an educational service agency, AKA a collaborative that we don't have in Berkshire County. So I hope that explains it a little bit. If people are really curious about Burke twelve, we have a board meeting on Saturday morning at nine o'clock. So you can get the full run from start to finish on Burke twelve. But Burke twelve is also working on funds. And we do have an earmark that was, I thought was dead, but it, it appears it has come to life and, and may make it through. And it's not quite what we asked for, but there is some money there. And again, if Burke twelve gets their funds, and I'm hoping that some of those resources can be invested in the work we're doing and that you all are doing in South County. And then I just want to point out that we continue to talk to the Department of Education about the importance of having support, fiscal support, technical support for this, this work, which is very complicated. And, and then finally, we really are pursuing other funding sources and partners. We recently won a rural innovation grant, which is, won't really have much impact on the work that you all are doing, except where there's money that is going to be tracking into into both Southern Berkshire and Berkshire Hills and into the experiences of students through that grant that was written by Burke twelve. So anyways, I just wanted to sort of sum up generally how we're advocating both on the policy, policy and work side, but also on the funding side for continued support. Our tasks real quickly, I don't, I've kind of have said them all, but
Jake, can you, can, can we speed this part up so that we can get to the budget and then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can just jump ahead this timeline. Let's get to the budget. All right. So budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
That was fast.
I can talk for hours. So we are closing out the fiscal, the Fund Code one ninety one fiscal year twenty two grant. It's June, the grant is closed at the end of this month. We reviewed this with the project management team on last week, they approved a couple of changes, but what you'll see on the, on the, on the grant is we had planned funds which equal a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We had actual spending, which was less than a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And so we are left with around twenty six thousand dollars that is, needs to be spent. But we are sitting on a transportation bid that I'll be discussing in just a minute. You'll be acting on possibly for up to twenty five thousand dollars, which if we approved, gets pretty close to zeroing out, zeroing out our grant. So that's a really quick summary. In addition to that, you have town and district funds, which are not time bound of fifty one thousand dollars, fifty one six. Any questions? The next slide is what happens post July one? So keeping in mind again that you have after July one, all you got to work with is fifty one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. And so these are potential ways we can think about it. Obviously paying your project manager, potential funds to keep your research team engaged. We need administrative support, which is right now Mary B, but we're about to transition to a new administrative assistant, ongoing support for fiscal analysis, legal work on the regional agreement and then the website. So if I tallied all those up, which is about three months of work, it gets us to forty three thousand dollars, which gives you a balance of around nine thousand dollars. And you still got more work to do. So, you know, that whether we decide to engage with Mars beyond July one to continue to support regional work, additional public relations and visioning, I'm optimistic that we might be able to backfill ed visioning with some other grant support. And then if there's other operational areas that you want to dig into and have outside expertise coming out. So this is, you know, in effect, a kind of a thumbnail sketch of what post July work looks like, which means that you need more money. And we'll continue to work to try to get that, but I know one of the things that Lucy will be discussing with the towns is the potential to contribute again to the endeavor. Given that they have contributed, we're about to spend, we've been, I think you've been very, you know, you, you very appropriately have spent the state's grant money before dipping into the town money. You're about to dip into the town money. And again, that'll take you a certain distance, but you're going to need really money, I think, to carry you through. In effect, probably January, but ideally through the spring. I can stop there for a minute, Lucy, if people have questions. Peter Dillon's hand went up quickly.
Okay, Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, just ve- ve- very quickly, I, I want to keep an eye on the rural school aid funds because in the context of the other funds that we have, S R and some of the other ones, that may be a place to potentially consider setting aside, like getting school committee support and setting aside some funds there.
And when would that have to happen, Peter? How, how would school committee support be expressed and by when would that support have to be articulated?
The, the, we'll see what happens from a state perspective around the, the rural aid or the rural sparsity aid and, and what the ultimate amount is, but, but then after that, it's within, to my knowledge, each, each district's judgment to decide how to allocate those resources.
Okay, so that could happen in September?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah, this, just so everyone's clear, this budget gets us through September.
That's right.
And then we'll be close to out of funds. Any other hands? It's hard for me to see with the screen up.
George?
Go ahead.
Thanks, Lucy. Both Peter and Jake have mentioned funds. Now, is, is, is this a new kind of funding availability? And I mean, there's so many things that, that say the rural that I know Egremont, you know, never qualifies for because of all kinds of other criteria. So.
Yeah.
The funding stream's been around for, for maybe four or five years. And e- even in early budget discussions, it looks like it's going to go up a little bit and it may go up again some as, as the different bodies of government and the governor weigh in.
It's going to right with the times.
Yeah, the, one thing I'll say is that when the Student Opportunity Act, which is, was the update to the funding formula
Right.
for schools was passed, one of the things that they really didn't act on was the, were concerns around rural districts and sparsity aid. So they created this secondary mechanism, but they also said you need to put a commission together to deal with and really dig into the issues related to rural districts. So the commission has been meeting, they have a set of recommendations. Adam Hines was the chair or co-chair of it. So this is where I think this additional money is going to be funneled towards the recommendations that came out of that particular commissions, among which were you need to provide support for districts to maneuver through studies, exploring collaboration and mergers. So you know, that's where I believe, in addition to the sparsity, which Peter is talking about, which is really a per pupil formula, there may be some targeted money to supporting the process work that's also is occurring in some of the, the regional and rural districts.
Okay, well, on your journey there, can you make sure that you make sure that keep their promise to pay a hundred percent of rural keep their promise to pay 100% of rural transportation?
We know it's interesting because I keep thinking we have some big asks to make as a group, and we should make them.
Yeah, it'd be a big one.
We shouldn't be shy about making them.
Right from the beginning, so we can figure it out.
But it, it, you know, if, if you're, I mean, obviously, they tried to raise regional transportation in the budget. But, you know, I, I think it's maybe something that we could, you know, make petition the state for, and this really unique thing that you all are attempting to do.
I think once we got close to 90%.
Yeah.
So I've, I've got my eye on the clock, guys. Do you have another? Okay.
The, the next thing, agenda subcommittee, that I think we, we close out with transportation with the administrative system, Lucy.
Correct, correct, so subcommittee reports and membership, I want to start with finance, Roger.
I'm back. The finance subcommittee is going to meet on June 15. And the focus of that meeting, I've been working with Jake on our agenda, but it's really to give the finance committee an opportunity to begin to delve into some of the underlying assumptions that went into Model A2. And a good, good number of the questions, unsurprisingly, came from Tom Burkle. So he's given us a good track to run on to conduct that session. So that's from a standpoint of process, that's what we're going to be dealing with. I guess this might also be a good time to tell the entire board that there's also going to be a change in the leadership of the finance subcommittee because my wife and I have made the life decision that our time in the Berkshire is over and we're moving back to New York City. And we had the good fortune of putting our house on the market and selling it immediately. So by the middle of July, we will be gone. So my sharing of, or at least opening of the finance subcommittee will be my, my last event on the regional school district board. And one of the agenda items will be to appoint a new chair for the board and also to sort through who are the alternates and, and how do we fill the empty seat that I'm creating on the finance subcommittee?
Wow, we'll really miss you.
Well, I'll miss you guys.
Yeah.
You know, circumstances dictate, you have to do things at certain times, and that's where we're at.
So Roger, on behalf of the full board, I want to express our deep, deep, deep gratitude for your participation over the last two plus years and your invaluable contribution. You know, in the law, there's this notion of the reasonable man, the ever elusive reasonable man. I've never found anyone like that until I met you. And you're sort of the epitome of the reasonable man, and we've, we've benefited much by having you part of the planning board. So we will miss you dearly, and thank you for all you've given to the board.
Well, thank you, maybe I'll get a T-shirt that says that.
You are going to get, you are going to get something. The prize is coming, don't worry. One of the things we need to do right now, actually, is talk about membership on the finance subcommittee because we're losing Roger. And Patrick White has told me that he would like to step off the finance subcommittee. He's on community outreach, he's got his hands full as chair of the select board in Stockbridge. So my suggestion is that we designate our two alternates on the finance subcommittee, who are Nadine Haver and Don Coburn, to take those two vacant spots. And then if there's anybody else who would like to step on as an alternate on finance subcommittee, that would be great, not necessary. We have to have, or we should have at least five. But if there are others who want to serve in that alternate role, that would be great. But I would like a motion to appoint Don Coburn and Nadine Haver as standing members of that subcommittee.
Go move.
Back here.
All right. So let's take a vote on that, I assume there's no discussion. Okay, Charlie?
Yes.
Lucy's, yes, George?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter Taylor?
Yes.
Steve Bannon?
Yes.
John Silbert?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Patrick? Marie?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Have I missed anyone? Okay. All right. Anything else from finance subcommittee?
I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Operations?
Thank you, Lucy. I didn't get a chance to echo my colleagues' thanks to Rogers. So let me do it now before I start, I'm going to miss you, Rogers, thank you. Let's see, the operations subcommittee met two weeks ago. And we approved our agenda for moving forward. And I must say that all the tasks that Jake said that we needed tonight, no matter what, you know, the, the prefer, the eventual, or whatever the future is, we're going to need all of that information. And I think we're well on our way to, to getting it. And, you know, it's, it's pretty hard with these Zoom meetings to. And Jake, I, I, I know you realize that, but it, it's just hard to take all that stuff in. But I, I, you know, you've sent it to, you know, project management, whatever, the subcommittee. So I'm familiar with it. I think it's really useful. What I was hearing tonight, I, 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 I have several reactions to in the beginning. And I, I wanted to see how, how the whole process was going. There, there, there's obviously an impatience here that we got to be very careful, doesn't become anger. I mean, we, we have enough of that floating around in our body politic, and it just seems to me that this board has already done so much over such a long period of time. And it's, it's really interesting to get new people coming in, as sorrowful as it is to see Roger leave. But to, to get new perspectives as to where we're at. We've already had evidence of that tonight and other meetings. But I don't think the anger at it, at the slowness of things is, is, is really justified, because I, I think this has been proved. And I, what I also was hearing tonight, more, more importantly, ver- ver- very briefly, because it'll come to the conclusion of my remarks. Is that people want clarity, and I know we have these meetings scheduled, and that will be very, very good. And people want a level of comfort they don't currently have. And so, you know, as I said earlier, you're, you're coming to Eggermont on June 28. And that'll, that'll be good. And we actually have, I know, Tom Burkle and Danielle, I'm not sure if Danielle joined us, she was hoping to. She had another commitment.
I don't see her, George.
Oh, oh, okay.
We're running out of, we're running out of time, can you wrap up the operations subcommittee report so we can?
Y- y- yes, I can, I can do it in about three minutes, may I have that?
Three minutes for operations subcommittee? Okay, if you could get it down to two, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll give, give it my best. And so clarity and a model. I, I do think we need a kind of alternative model, as well as diving deep into the model that has been preferred. I don't want to get all these, you know, procedural issues. I just want to go on with this process. And so we have, and I say we, I mean, three members, you know, Tom Burkle, Danielle Jordan Kelly, and myself from Eggermont have a view that is certainly not totally synchronous, but is not incompatible with anything that's been looked at or done. But it's a different way of looking at things, and so we look forward to talking to you about it. And I'd like to be able to have other people see it. So, you know, I don't want to distribute it, but it is a, you know, you request an explanation for.
George, we're, we're off that topic, we're in operations subcommittee report, and this does seem sort of out of order, because you're not, you're not reporting on your subcommittee, you're reporting on the personal views of you, Danelle, and Tom Burkle. Tom Burkle's on finance.
Yes. This is a meeting of our full board, I believe.
Yeah, but on the agenda right now, we're to operations subcommittee report. I don't want to cut you off, we just have 36 minutes to get through a lot of stuff. So if you could wrap up the operations subcommittee report, that would be great.
It's wrapped up.
Thanks, George. Okay, educational quality subcommittee?
So we have not met, we are expecting the Hanover Report, as Jake said, at the end of the month. By Monday, we will have a doodle poll out for a meeting, either the week before the two public convenings or the week right after, depending on how quickly we can get people together. And our task will be both to look at the report, but really more importantly, to talk about what the educational visioning process is going to look like. What I will say very quickly about membership is that we only have four members. So there actually, if anyone is interested, is an open fifth voting seat on the education committee. And the work that we're doing is really important, so if there is anybody who's interested in participating in it, we have an open seat, and of course, then room for alternates. So I just wanted to put that out there moving forward, in case anyone was interested in joining us.
Thank you, Deb. Community, anything more?
Nope, that's it, thank you, Roger.
Okay.
Good luck.
Yeah. Community outreach subcommittee, I'm going to be really brief. We are meeting every two weeks, we've got our next meeting on Friday, everyone's welcome to join. We've got the community convenings coming up in June. As Jake said, we've got the meetings with the eight select board slash finance committees of the eight towns in process. And we continue to do community outreach, obviously, through these meetings, through our frequently asked questions. Those questions and responses are going to be updated after this meeting. Jake continues to get questions and comments in from the website. And of course, every one of us is responsible for community outreach every day, right? So I did some community outreach today at lunch, I'm doing some more community outreach tomorrow at lunch. And I hope all of us are talking to our friends, acquaintances, colleagues about the work we're doing and the progress that we've made. Shane sent me a letter after, so it was right before our last project management subcommittee, I believe, meeting, and asked that I put on the agenda for tonight some top, put some time aside for her to either read that letter to the group or summarize it for the group. So Jane, I'll turn the floor over to you.
I, I won't read it, I'll, I'll just summarize it in light of the way people view my opinions. I was opposed to the, my letter, can you hear me?
Please don't interrupt, Jane, go ahead, Jane.
I, I object, I wanted to clarify because Lucy mentioned in a public meeting that I was trying to sabotage, she didn't use the word sabotage, but I'm just, undermine the work of the committee. And my reason for not being enthusiastic about the June choice of a meeting public comment or public input is that, generally speaking, I have been saying since day one that in order for us to be successive, successful, we needed to be including our communities in the planning process. And I am looking for the success of the work that we've been doing. And I, I feel very concerned that we have not been interacting with the community in a way that I think is meaningful on our community level and, and not just through websites and, and Zoom meetings. So I think that you misunderstand that somebody who has different opinions, who has 40 years of commitment to our education in South County, would be trying to undermine anything that would be good for kids and for our communities. So I think if anybody wants to see the full letter, I'm happy to send it to you. But it's very difficult when someone who has a different opinion is thought to be a, a negative person. Because anybody who's worked with me in education over these years would know that that's not true. So that's all I need to say tonight.
Okay, and I again applaud the work that you have done and continue to do, Jane, for the kids in South County, I'm an admirer of yours and of your work. And your viewpoint is always welcome and has always been welcomed on this board. So next is project management subcommittee report, and I, I don't really think there's anything more to report, Jake, on that, is there?
I don't think so, no, we have two action items that come out of that. One is the transportation RFQ, and the other is the admin system, which I have a couple slides for, we can just add on those.
Yeah, so why don't we go to the transportation RSQ and the proposal?
Goodness. All right, so with the support of the operations subcommittee, we put together requests for quotes related to transportation. So we identified transportation as a area needing further study. The idea is we build from the transportation report, which our research team did, which I think is a good foundational report, I certainly stand by it. We drew up language for the RFQ, which was approved by sort of. sort of, we presented and was approved by the subcommittee and project management. And then we have released it to over, I think, six total vendors. And as of today, which was the deadline, we have one response, one proposal submitted. The RFQ had a number of elements in it. I'll just quickly summarize these. The model was to focus on A2, which is obviously a single region, shared high school. All the other schools are operational. Within that, we put three sub scenarios. One was to model a transportation system that would have the combined high school and all students attending the schools as they currently attend. And the second would be modeling a shared high school with students attending the school that is closest to them, so geographically proximal. It's really just an exercise. And then thirdly, we had set, obviously, in our transportation, our final analysis, the idea that no students would be on the bus. For over sixty minutes and we asked the question, what would it take to actually reduce that to forty five minutes? And so we're asking the vendor to actually try to model at forty five. It could mean you got to double your fleet. I don't know that. But it's going to be an interesting exercise. And then we asked the vendor to look at delivery approaches. One would be the district contract as it currently does. The second purchase, own and operate their own fleet and their own staff. And the third that they, they would partner with the closest regional collaborative, which would be potentially lower pioneer. And then there was areas of analysis that we put at the RFQ, cost of operation, average route times, what sort of reimbursable cost versus non-reimbursable would exist. You know, things of that sort, which you can see spelled out here. We received one proposal. It's a very comprehensive proposal from Alliance Education. The primary on Alliance Education is Rich Labrie, who many of you know. Rich has been around the transportation business for quite a while. Does studies, I believe he's doing a study right now in Southern Berkshire. For them, he has two additional individuals. He provided resumes and backgrounds and referrals and references and examples of studies. His proposal would include purchasing software and maps for the current two districts. So you get a very precise look at where the kids are and how you would potentially root them based on the parameters we set. And his proposal has really basically just mirrors the RFQ, which is, you know, running the scenarios consistent with A2, combined high school, students go to the closest school, sixty, forty five minutes, and then analyzing delivery model. He submitted a proposal that is a not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars. It doesn't mean it will be twenty five thousand dollars, but it won't exceed twenty five thousand. And this includes the purchase of the software and the maps, which is about a ten thousand dollar purchase. If I can pause there, Lucy, because we would be needing board action to approve this in order to contract with Alliance and move forward.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the not to exceed twenty five thousand, about ten thousand of that is for software and fifteen thousand is for the services of his team, correct?
That's correct.
That's a not to exceed amount. And this work would need to be substantially concluded by the end of the month. Okay, so that we can take advantage of the state funding. All right, so I will entertain a motion to.
I have a question.
Okay.
Will Bonnie? That's Bonnie. Will we own the software or at the completion?
We.
Because that's very valuable.
Yeah, you, you never own the software. So the question is whether the license that he's going to purchase is assignable and that's something we're looking into.
Okay.
But that's the hope and expectation, Bonnie.
That, that the license will be transferred to us.
That the license is assignable.
Assignable.
Yeah.
Lucy, I would make a motion. I would make a motion to accept the the proposal and contract with the firm.
Thank you, Peter. That's second by John.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? I see a hand up. George.
Thank you, Lucy. I, I certainly supported both of the operations subcommittee and at the project management subcommittee. Getting some transportation expert in here. We only have one response. Are we really comfortable with this? I understand we have terrible time constraints here, but I just. I mean, John Silver, you just seconded this motion. Are you comfortable with proceeding with this? I mean, I haven't even read the thing, so I don't, I don't know.
I'll, I'll let John respond, but I do want to point out that this is a consultant that has been engaged by the Southern Berkshire Regional School District. They obviously.
I, I did hear that. I mean, I, I'm not of interest, yes.
Yeah, and Jake, do you want to talk about the other folks you spoke with and tried to elicit interest from?
Yeah, I, I got did some, obviously I reached out to Transfinder, who you all know. We had reached out to, in the first phase, Transfinder was, was happy. I reached out to them, but said.
Is that the Albany firm?
Correct.
Okay.
And they said it just wouldn't fit in their portfolio at this point.
Right.
So they actually flat out just said no. I sent it to a fellow, I got referred to it, Harvard, who did a regional study on urban transportation. I sent it to the Abrahams Group that has a transportation person. I sent it to Berkshire Regional Planning because I, they had hired an individual who had transportation expertise onto their staff. Tom Attusco didn't respond specifically saying that they would do it, but he said he would continue to push it out to other transportation experts he knew. So this is what we have. I mean, I will say that Rich Labrie is a well-known individual and in the region, in the state, in the transportation biz. That's probably the best I can, I can offer. Does he have the only perspective is the, is the end, is he the end all be all? I, I can't say that, but I do know he has, he's highly known as having expertise in this area.
Okay, I, I see there lots of hands up, so.
Yeah, Roger.
I was just going to comment on the, the one bid issue. It's, it's pretty, pretty common. I mean, when we put out stuff for bid out of West Stockbridge, we tend to end up with the, the same one or two people and I don't care how many people you, you try to solicit, you know. It's, it's not ideal, but I wouldn't think it would sink.
It's certainly tougher than it used to be.
I would think that's, that's not a reason not to accept this.
Thank you, Roger. Bonnie?
Could we ask Beth what her experience has been working with them? I, since there is a contract with them for our district.
Beth had to step out. There's a performance going on at school. I, I doubt that she can be available to answer, but I know that she does feel, think highly of this person, the principal of that firm.
Thank you, Jane. Any further discussion before we call for a vote? I don't see any hands, so I'm going to take a roll call vote. All in favor. Charlie?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Deb Phillips?
Hi.
Peter Taylor?
Yes.
Steve Bannon?
Yes.
John Silbert?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Patrick? Patrick? I'm sorry, I missed you. Laura?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Did I miss anyone? Okay. So you can proceed, Jake.
Sure, so I, I don't know if everyone knows that Mary is moving on. Did you? Did you want to talk about that, Lucy, before I jump in?
I can talk about my profound grief.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't want to start crying in the middle of a planning board meeting. Mary, you've been just a lifesaver to all of us and such a warm and friendly and competent presence from the first day you began to the very last day we've enticed you to remain. And again, I can't thank you enough. I've written you about fifty emails thanking you, also trying to change your mind. Those weren't successful. So thank you very much for all of your service. You've been terrific.
Yeah, I don't.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Lucy and Jake.
Yeah, Mary's been just an amazing partner and we have a lot of late night email exchanges and weekend email exchanges. And Mary responds within, she responds, I feel like I'm a fast responder, but you're faster. So I appreciate you, you've been on call twenty four seven in effect to try to keep us on target. And I, I do appreciate all the work that goes into this. So with that said, with the advice of council, we did put together RFQ, request for quotes. We also circulated a very brief job description. And that was posted. It was circulated through you all. It was circulated through our wide electronic network. And it was posted in the shopper's guide. We had five total inquiries and two formal applications. The two formal applicants were interviewed. I guess it was more of a conversation interview, but it was an interview. We asked them questions. They submitted resumes and cover letters. They were both, I have to be honest with you, exceptional candidates. We will not miss with either of these two. But Lucy did ask me to make a recommendation and I am recommending to the board that we hire Christine Kelly. Christine currently works in the Berkshire Hills Regional School District. She is front office at Muddy Brook, but she is also the school committee recorder for Hills. So she has a lot of experience in the area of taking minutes, writing up minutes, recording minutes. She has experience with, yeah, obviously communicating with board members and posting things in terms of keeping things timely for open meeting, regulations and expectations, working on the website. So she, we had a great conversation with her, a great conversation with the second applicant too. But I think with all that said, I would be recommending Christine Kelly as our next administrative assistant.
So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Who, who's the second?
The first second, but I'll defer to the second second.
I think, I, I have no idea. Go ahead.
Sean is going to be the designated second. All right, discussion, Jane.
Um, let me put my cameras on. I'm curious about the other applicant, just because I am sure that she's an honorable person. But if we're trying to stay neutral here, I think it's, if there is somebody equivalently prepared, that person should be brought forward for us to consider. Obviously, she can't be as knowledgeable about schools and she is very knowledgeable about one district and not the other. So is there, can you talk to us a little bit more about the qualifications of the second applicant? Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to defer to Lucy only because I don't know to what degree you'd want me discussing the background on a candidate who is not necessarily being recommended. I, I don't, I, I'm open to doing that, but I also don't want to put somebody out into the public space who was not hired for a position. And that, I, I, I'm always a little hesitant to embarrass anybody, you know.
I agree with that.
So don't I.
Oh, I agree with that. Can you give, just outline what qualifications they had without mentioning who they are or where they worked?
Yeah, undergraduate, bachelor's degree, paralegal, strong, up and coming, young professional, who would be exceptional. Okay, there's no question. She would have done a tremendous job. Does not have experience, you know, sitting and working as a recorder for a public body. She has certainly other skills that would certainly be beneficial. But I think at the end of the day, because we had somebody who applied with the public body experience and track record and a good reference from her boss, we decided to go that direction. Yeah, I just would say that I interviewed the second candidate with Jake and I think everything he shared was spot on. She was just a very strong presence and had background and skills that could have served this board well. I think the distinction that Jake pulls out, though, in terms of direct experience supporting a board like this in the educational context, so obviously is a distinguishing characteristic that sets the recommended candidate above really an exceptional second candidate.
Lucy, I'd like to move on and, and make this vote now because we can carry this conversation on and on and on. So let's, let's move forward.
I'll second Charlie's motion to move the question.
Okay, so we need to take a vote on the motion to move the question. Charlie?
I'm in favor.
George?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Peter Taylor?
Yes.
Steve? Bannon?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Don?
Yep.
Laura? Laura? Jane?
I know.
Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Sean Stephen? Patrick? Marie?
Yes.
And Roger?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. Okay, so now we're going to vote on the recommended candidate. Any more discussion? Okay, Charlie?
Yes.
George?
Hi.
Deb? Peter Taylor?
Yes.
Steve Bannon?
Yes.
John Silbert?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Laura? Laura? Jane?
No.
Tara, okay, got it. Tara?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Sean? Sean. Patrick. Marie.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, we got through that. Thank you. Okay, so we've got eight minutes. For public comments. Sharon. Mary, can you promote Sharon to panelist?
Sharon Gregory.
Yeah, Sharon Gregory.
Sharon Gregory is the former chairman of the Finance Committee in Great Barrington, is that correct?
Believe so, yes.
Uh, can you hear me now, Lucy?
Yes, Sharon, thank you.
Okay, sorry, it's a two two-sided thing. I just wanted to say I'm very pleased that the committee was able to. Endorse a an alternative to pursue. It's still very complicated. I think it was sixteen to six. But I am having followed. This whole discussion from seven years ago, not with this committee, but with. There are the Berkshire County Education Task Force. That there's an awful lot of work that has gone into this and a lot of research. So I was disturbed that the the committee for outreach is expected to cover. Why we might not want to have. The either campuses, but another campus which is complicated. The consultant has explained the process of finding another location, financing and so forth. So I don't understand why we have to use all the subcommittees to rethink the. Committee's vote, or the subcommittees to rethink that committee's vote. I think it's counterproductive and it's really slowing. The decision-making process down and as an observer. It's hard not to be impatient with it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Any other public comments?
I I think Bonnie Sanders up.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the public attendees first and then I'll and then I'll go to Bonnie. Okay, I don't see any others. Bonnie, go ahead.
Okay. I just feel that I have to say something regarding what happened earlier in the meeting. Jane clearly feels very strongly about what she said. And I felt an overwhelming sense and then when I commented as well. That there is an impatience. And an impatience, when Jane and I have both been lifelong educators. I feel very much as though there was, and I think George McGurn. Made the best statement related to this. It's very hard if we're not showing the respect that we need to have. And it's it's very difficult when we're, I don't know where that noise is coming from. We're doing this all on. But this is probably the most critical decision. That our communities are going to make for the future of all of our children and for the economies of our towns. And I I felt after those first few minutes. Why should I even bother to say anything else unless a specific question on a fact? And I don't like that feeling. And maybe I'm the only one feeling that way. I was one of the six no votes. But I'm feeling very much as though. We're not being valued in certain ways. And very much as though all of us are not listening to each other as carefully. I voted yes on a number of things where maybe I would have wanted to have more discussion, but I recognize the impatience. Of some people in terms of moving ahead, and if it didn't have what I believe to be the enormous impact it needed, fine, I'll stand back. But I think you have that there are people among us, our membership, that. Need to take a closer look, particularly in terms of how they responded at the start of the meeting. To Jane, and I I felt I couldn't leave this meeting without saying that.
Don Coburn.
I just want to ask a question. If we have a minute of Jake. The relationship between the application for the high school and what we're doing. Are they waiting on that application to see whether the towns will vote to be part? Of this of project, or are they presenting two alternatives? And what's exactly the status of that application?
Yeah.
That's my question.
I might lean on Peter a little bit on this one.
Peter Dylan question.
I'll try to be brief, because I I tend to be long-winded occasionally. We we submitted an application that was approved by the MSA into the eligibility period. To. Do a feasibility study around high school at Monument Mountain. That clock starts ticking on that project on August first and we have two hundred and seventy days. All along, they know this conversation has been going on. And what I'm gonna propose to them, though they've not committed to this yet, is we look at the processes. To set in a number for enrollment and then the number for enrollment drives a design of the building. If we were to build a high school as it is now, that number would probably be. Close to five twenty-five or five fifty. If we were to build a high school for the eight towns, that number would be closer to. Seven twenty-five or seven fifty. So what I'm asking the MSBA to do is to let us explore both options simultaneously. What happened a couple days ago was Great Barrington was the the third town. To almost unanimously vote to authorize borrowing to cover the cost of that work. So that's very good news and and we've we've taken, we've taken care of that. So they're interconnected. And and I think it would be advan- advantageous. To to look at both possibilities simultaneously, because it was so hard for us to get into this process. If if we get to a point where where this work is stuck. I I'll do everything I can in my ability to make sure we stay in the process. Does that answer your question, Don?
Thank you very much.
Okay, and then as I talk to the MSBA throughout the process, I'll come back and I'll share updates with with this group.
Okay, thank you. So we're at seven thirty, George. I see your hand up. Is it something that can wait until operations? Or is it something you feel strongly?
I I I would like to respond to Sharon Gregory in about thirty seconds.
Okay.
Good. Sharon, we've never actually met, but I do know a bit about your background and have great respect for that. But I just want to clarify that this is not an issue at the end of the day. That subcommittees are gonna deal with at whatever speed that you might find insufficient. But at the end of the day, this is a decision of the towns. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Yeah, absolutely right. We are. An advisory board. At the end of the day, we can make a recommendation and we're mandated to do that. If we have a recommendation to make to the to the eight towns. And it is going to be the eight towns, the residents of those eight towns that will make the decision. So I thank everyone for their patience tonight. I thank everyone for their patience over the last two plus years that we've been meeting. I want to thank again Roger for his service to this board. I want to thank again Mary for her service to the board. But I also want to thank everybody else on this call for their service to the board. It takes a tremendous amount of time. It's a difficult and complex problem. There are different points of view. We, there may or may not be unanimity at the end of the day. But I think our process has been strong and I think we're continue to. Work through the process as best we can and get to a decision as expeditiously as we can without cutting corners. So thank you all for your participation. I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Charlie. George.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Peter Taylor.
Yes.
Steve Bannon. John Silbert.
Yes.
Don Coburn. Laura. Jane.
Yeah.
Tara.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Bonnie.
Yes.
Sean. Patrick, Marie.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
And Lucy's a yes. Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.